Hey, good evening, everyone that's here.
Very few.
Uh, we are here to initially to have a notice of public hearing. The town in Brandon received $100,000 accessibility modification grant from the state of Vermont under Vermont Community Development Program. The VCDP funds received have been used to complete physical accessibility modifications at the Brandon Free Public Library, including limited use, limited access lift, stair, tower, servicing all four levels of the building. Um, information is available at the town offices at 49 Center Street. And we are here to take any other information anyone wants to give us. And I believe that we're supposed to have someone here from the library soon.
S has is supposed to be here from the library to talk about it.
Oh. We will start, I guess, without Bruce. If anyone has anything that they would like to say regarding this grant. Pardon? What was the question? If you have anything you'd like to say about the $100,000 grant um that the town has received from the state to be used at the Brandon Library. And that's about it. We are, we're supposed to have somebody here from the library? I don't see them. You may speak.
Yes, that grant was, uh, the town applied for it as a pass through entity for the library. Passed through, so the town was eligible for it and the library was the town, was the designated recipient of it.
So the entire thing went to the library and they knew pretty advanced approximately how much they were going to use for the lift.
So the, the library actually found the grant and asked for the town to be their sponsoring entity. And the amount of, um, the $100,000 amount was fully utilized by their accessibility efforts. They may not have been eligible. It may have been only issued to municipalities. I, I don't know. That was something that happened quite some time ago at this point. It was be-
It's not uncommon that we're a pass through entity.
Right. We've done it for the library in the past and we've done it for other entities too. Yep.
Yeah.
If you want to ask for any other public-
Yeah, any other comment or?
Was the whole, I may have, I may have to ask. Okay, same time, I just wanted to try to figure out. So, um, the whole entire $100,000 went to the library?
Yes, it was all used for their accessibility project.
Well, that's my grant to elevate them.
I, I believe there are accessible bathrooms and so on and so forth. Yep.
We would hope so.
I hope it hears and hope to take over the full part.
Oh, that's how I did, oh, no.
Proud.
Bathroom, now, bathroom above the one hundred.
My opinion, yeah. He, he probably. Can know that, but the elevator itself was on the scene.
A little short.
Any other public?
Yeah, any other comments other, right?
So what I was just, Mr. Chair, is that you could leave the meet, leave the hearing open until you need to call the select board to order. And right, you could wait for, uh, the representative of the library, uh, if he's able to attend.
Fine, we shall do it that way.
Okay.
Yeah.
So should we suspend the meeting and like?
Good, leave the hearing open and just say that it's at recess so that people in the room could have conversations other than related to the hearing. And we could, uh, start the recording again if somebody came in and wanted to speak to it.
By the same token, meeting started at 6:30, well announced, and we've held it and.
You could choose to do that, yes. I just was, um, I had just been made aware though, that someone from the library was expected. And so I, I don't know why the, um, we, we don't have that person right now.
Well, exactly.
Yep.
I, I appreciate that.
That's all, yep.
Why don't, why don't we just recess for now? And we'll come back if, if the library comes.
Okay, shall I pause the recording?
Sure. Jeff, we're gonna come out. For the people who have just arrived, uh, we had a 6:30 hearing to discuss a grant, uh, accessibility grant for the library that the town is a pass through on. Uh, because there were so few people here, we recessed it. Uh, but it is now 10 minutes of seven, so I'm going to come out of recess to accept any additional comments that the public may have regarding the grant, which was used for, um, uh, limited access lift at the, uh, library. Uh, and the stair tower for servicing the building. Uh, we had already had questions that were asking if the $100,000 has covered the whole cost of that, and the answer was no, that it was way, way more than that. We were expecting a representative from the library who actually received the grant, and they have not arrived. So we will come back if there's anybody else who has any question regarding the $100,000 grant that came into the library. They may ask us, and it's possible our town manager might know the answer. If not, I want to end that hearing.
There's nobody else here for that.
Mr. Chair, also, the difference between a hearing and like a Q and A session is that it's also a time for the board to just hear comments from the community. It doesn't have to be a question, can be a concern that you want to express about it or the result of it.
Neil has his hand up.
Neil has his hand, yes, Jeff. The library applied for the grant and the town has to act as a pass through so that money actually comes into the town, goes to the library. So we're really not that involved in it, other than the state wants the money to come to the town. Any other public comment on the grant? None heard of it, like the motion to close this hearing?
Make a motion to close the hearing.
All in favor?
Aye.
The hearing is done, we will start the select board.
That's now.
At, uh, 7:00 PM.
Yeah.
Go for it.
Good evening, everyone, and, uh, thank you all for, for coming. It's a large crowd for August. This is very good. Um, our order of business tonight will be that we're going to do the cannabis control. Oh, no, the liquor control first, cannabis second, and then on to our select board meeting, uh, third. We do have a couple of very brief, uh, executive sessions and a couple of those meetings, and it will not take long and we'll be able to move on. So first part of business is the liquor control. I need to, uh, call that meeting to order and ask for the, someone to approve the agenda as written.
I make the emotion to adopt the agenda.
Second. Motion and a second. Any changes and additions to that agenda? None heard. We move on to item two, which is approval of the minutes of the July 22nd, uh, liquor control meeting.
Make a motion to approve those.
Second.
Then a motion and a second to approve the minutes. All in favor of approving the minutes, say aye. Aye. Opposed, no one? Uh, item three, to approve tobacco substitute licenses.
Um, I make a motion for, to have consent agenda item for items three and four, which will include two applications, um, licenses and two permits.
Do we have a second on that? Okay. Then we have a motion and a second to approve items three and four, approval of licenses altogether. All in favor, please say aye. 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 Opposed, no one? Public comment on items of liquor control. Liquor control only, none heard. Do we have a motion to adjourn the Brandon liquor commission?
I'll make a note.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, no one? As promised, quick. Uh, now, the Brandon Board of Cannabis Control Commissioners Meeting, all to order. Do I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
Make a motion to adopt the agenda.
Have a second. Second.
Mr. Chair, would you entertain an amendment to the agenda? We have a late application to consider tonight if you wish to. The application number is S dash 000009267. It's a renewal license, manufacturer tier two, Sun Valley Herb Craft LLC.
Add that?
Vote to adopt the agenda.
Vote to adopt the agenda with that amendment. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, no one? Next would be to approve the minutes of the July 22nd cannabis control meeting. Motion and second to approve the minutes of the July 22nd, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, no one? Now we will have a very brief executive session, which the board will go to the library. Jeff, Mr. Chair, just in time to get here again.
Uh, the, the board's gonna want to, uh, make a motion and a second and vote to go into motion under this priv-
Okay, what is your code numbers? Did you get them?
It's in item four on the agenda.
Okay.
I make a motion that we enter executive session for one VSA 313 sub A sub six. Records exempt from the access to public records provisions of one VSA 313.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All in favor, in, executive session. Okay, we are back out of executive session. We are now on item five, uh, new application, retailer Lucky Seven Dispensary. Uh, anyone like to make a motion on that?
I'll make a motion to approve that.
We have a second.
Second.
Second, we have a motion and a second to approve retailer Lucky Seven Dispensary. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no one? Public comment on cannabis? Yes. Oh, yes, thank you very much. Okay, so now we have the renewal, um, tier two license, motion on that? Brian, make a motion?
Make that motion. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on renewal tier two license. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, no one? Item seven.
I'm actually six.
Oh, public comment on cannabis. It's a-
I keep on getting about all these organizations that are applying and getting the license that we have. If the select board have, uh, overview of how many, so, uh, cannabis vendors is a good idea for $100,000.
Well, it's interesting the way you phrase that, because I thought you were gonna ask if we know how many we have. We do know how many we have, but it's not up to us to limit. Um, if they're legal and they're going by rules, we don't have that power to say how many we can buy.
How many do we have?
That's a good question.
Currently two, and then the select board tonight approved a third. So, um, the select board has acted. Cannabis licenses of varying kinds, cultivators, manufacturers, integrated licenses, which do two or three different things, and retail. Establishments that have been established are the one. The, uh. And the new, which when the-
Okay, from tonight, which I'll be tomorrow morning, uh, then that will be public information related to that. So, according to that, I just heard, while Brandon does not have a final say so, if final, if Brandon does not approve an application, then the state is likely, not likely to ignore or call that Brandon's need.
Mr. Chair.
That is true, but, um, we're not allowed to, um, disqualify someone just because we don't want them. The only, the only role this board plays is that we're kind of like an early warning to the state if we hear there's problems with somebody and how they're operating. I, I've struggled with what I, the role of this board is as well. And, um, it's kind of like liquor. Um, you see us go through these liquor control meetings just wham bam bam, because we really don't have hardly any authority over that. Um, we're really supposed to be an early warning, you know?
Three seven being door to door cannabis stores, because everybody sees that it's a great idea and it's a good business, and it's cash heavy. So why not just put them one right after another?
Yes.
There were up businesses that wanted to do that, that could have happened. But the select board, the voters have said yes to retail cannabis. The select board not put any limits on how many licenses are issued. The licenses for cannabis work in the opposite direction of most companies. And that the licenses start with the state and then comes to the town. Or basically an ascent or a scout moving to like, uh, you should reconsider this application because you think this or that is a problem. But the only specific things that there, that a local cannabis commission is allowed to stop an application for is a signage violation or something that doesn't comply with setbacks and zoning that every other business gets out to. It designed to be, uh, very little local discretion once the voters at the town say that they like.
Well, and, and another way to say that is it's designed to be a completely fair playing field for businesses to operate. And, um, the state has gone out of their way to, um, take away any ability to discriminate against cannabis. And to be realistic about your concern, um, like any business, like gas stations. I mean, gas stations at one point, there were more of them because they were more lucrative. And then what we found is, is there were less need for them, there was less of them. And I can assure you, if there becomes too many cannabis shops where they are not making money, they will start to close. And so at some point, you'll find the right number of cannabis shops for the number of customers that want to access the product.
Hey, Trish?
So if you said it's one, the town voters say they're able, that maybe townspeople could put up a position, have an election, it says we no longer want cannabis in our town?
Yes. Yes.
The town voted by our-
Billion ballot. Point, I don't recall whether it was an egg. Uh, voted, tell cannabis. And to stop. Cannabis and brand.
Well, there is this ill appropriate sighting, just to be clear. They're not allowed to be with us in a certain distance of the school and-
Says regulated.
Exactly.
The select board could choose to place it on the ballot, or a petition, uh, voters could choose to place it on the ballot.
Yes, okay, cool.
When you said, um, if some, if they wanted to put a petition forward, is, is it just for retail? Or could the growers still grow? Or does it include anything associated with cannabis if they didn't have a yes to it?
Yes.
The town can have no control, but the town would not, uh, do that. There's a distinction.
We're here, yes.
When is the age of, to cut off whatever, for getting, that's the question.
I don't know. Mr. Moore.
Twenty-one.
Twenty-one to per- Yes, sir. Where? Mine's the, the age of the person? The person, we're selling it.
So, uh, well, I, I would like to join you, because, um, I, I've been to the, um, store as to tour the facility twice now, once by myself and once with, um, uh, town manager Seth Hopkins. And there is a, because I was very curious about the degree of, um, monitoring that's required. And I was impressed with the, um, the amount of work they have to do to verify the eligibility of people purchasing product and the records they keep. Um, and, and, and they were, um, they were proud to, um, put forward what they do to stay on the legal side, because they appreciate the hazard of having people that are cheating, which are then unfairly competitive against them. And so, um, I, I would urge you, if you have concerns, to, uh, stop in and, and talk with them and, and gain some confidence in, in how they work. Great.
Now, this fellow, I need you to say your names for the record. Merchant. Yeah, but the town or the state has any control in pricing, it would be totally the merchant would price as a deem.
Well, in truth, they can charge whatever the market will bear.
Okay. Any other, uh, public comments on cannabis? Here we go, yeah, Brett?
If the town were to vote that they don't want retail any longer, would be interesting.
The question was, the town voted to not have any of this.
The ability to operate, Brandon.
Do we get 1% money on cannabis?
Tax on cannabis sale.
Money comes in that goes towards our tax, yes.
I think as a wage on the venture, when somebody is driving into the force of Maryland.
I could not answer that officially. I know originally they were opposed cannabis because of that concern, and I couldn't tell you if there's anything now.
Yeah.
Yep. Okay. I said yesterday, I'll say it again, I am amazed that, uh, in the changing of times, I never thought that I would chair a cannabis meeting. So, uh, that said, uh, do we have a motion to adjourn the cannabis meeting?
Motion to adjourn cannabis second.
Second, motion and second, with cannabis, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Okay. Uh, now, the Brandon August 12th select board meeting. Uh, we have an, uh, called a order, we need to adopt an agenda.
Motion to adopt, adopt the agenda.
Motion to adopt, a second.
I'll second that.
Addition.
Chair and support would, um, at number 10A, an executive session-
Under one VSA, section 313A2 regarding real estate.
So can we know which real estate?
I don't want to do that. Um, I would say it would, it's real estate, um, that the town might be in a position to, uh, obtain an option or to buy.
That's sufficient, thank you.
Any other changes from the board? None heard at all, in favor of approving the agenda with adding 10A, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, no one? Uh, item two, we have a very brief, uh, executive session. So we're gonna be heading into executive session for less than five minutes.
I make a motion that we enter executive session under the, um, VSA, one VSA 313, 3A3, to include Wayne Rousenberg.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Very brief.
Going into executive session.
Thank you all for waiting, uh, sorry, we had to break off. Um, I think that Mr. Moore has already mentioned it, but, uh, to all the people we have on Zoom, we do have to start using the podium with the microphone, and for the people that can't get there, we'll pass the microphone to you. Uh, that way, anyone at home is can hear it and it's official for our, uh, our record keeping on the select board minutes. We are set. So now we're at item three, which is re-incurring matters. 3A is the approval of the select board minutes from July 22nd. Do I have a motion on that?
Make a motion to approve.
Motion and a second to approve the minutes, any errors or corrections? None heard, all in favor of approval of the minute, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. No one was opposed. Uh, 3B is the, well, we got two warrants. We have a warrant for $20,895.62 and one for $489.99, yeah, 26 cents.
Yeah, I make a motion that we approve the FY 2023, 24 warrant for $20,895.62.
Motion and a second on the first one. All in favor of that warrant or have questions, raise questions on the warrant? None heard, all in favor of passing or approving the warrant, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, and now I make a motion, um, to pass the warrant for FY 24, 25, um, in the amount of $489,999.26.
Any questions on those? All in favor of approval of the warrant, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, no one? Item four, town committee report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, thank you to the members of the public who are here tonight in person and by Zoom. I just want to highlight a few things from the report that I submitted, if I could. I did bring tonight. I did bring, uh, the two slate samples. Those are Vermont quarried slate, uh, that Spardella has provided. I don't know if I could ask Mr. Coolidge to maybe do a little show and tell with them. Um, the, the gray, is that the gray? The gray is quarried in Wells, Vermont, and the green, uh, is in, is quarried in North Poltney. And these are for the town hall roof. Um, so the select board, if it has some direction that it wants to give, happy to listen. I, I would say for the, uh, benefit of the select board, uh, they advised that the gray slate has a weight of eight pounds per square foot, and the green is 10 and a half pounds per square foot. Some other things to highlight in my report, uh, the town will be moving to the .gov- Some other things to highlight in my report, the town will be moving to the .gov domain for its website and email and so forth. We secured a top level domain that's available to us as a local unit of government. And in coming weeks, we will be migrating the website and the town's email addresses. This will offer the town the highest security that we can get through digital means. There's no extra fee. I did attend seven different meetings of other boards and districts in the last couple of weeks. I would highlight, we used our Brandon opt-in text alert system to alert people to a water emergency on Grove Street and the resulting traffic related to it. And I would encourage everybody to really please consider signing up for that. You can get to it from the town website on the notices page to sign up for it. It's the fastest way to get information when the town has an emergency that it wants people to know about for public health or public safety. In companionship with that, you might also consider the VT Alert System, the Vermont Alert System, has more of a statewide reach, but you can get alerts for just the towns that you choose to hear about. The library, ending August, emptying out the room, the big room in the town hall basement here. And during September, they've offered to work with us to get that main meeting space back into order for the select board. The town treasurer has reported the quarterly 1%. Updates that I just gave to the board tonight that were not ready at the time of my report on Friday. The Act two fifty one acre review ordinance that the select board repealed on June tenth. It was did not receive a voted a voter petition to challenge the repeal of the ordinance. So as of August tenth, Saturday, the select board's action stands and Brandon is considered a ten acre town for Act two fifty review purposes. I've alerted the Regional Planning Commission, actually mentioned it to the Regional Planning Executive Director Devon Neary when I was at the Town Manager's Quarterly Meeting on Thursday, and he was very excited. He felt that this would be good. The town has requested and received authorization to work on both banks of the Nashaby River in the neighborhood of the intersection of Union Street and Barlow Avenue. So if you see equipment and so. To protect the town's infrastructure. Starting to. Lies the ground. Reminder to all voters that the state primary election will be conducted tomorrow from seven AM to seven PM at the American Legion. The town clerk and several volunteers have mailed the FY twenty-five tax bills. The first quarterly payment is due on September fifteenth. Advised that a notice of condemnation of a defective maple tree at number nine street will be. And after the required formal warnings, this tree and there's previously condemned Fox Road, Steinberg Road, and one at Fifty-two Park Street and one at Forty-four Park Street will be. Town play taking down, we noticed trees. The comments, bird nesting season. So we'll try to do. And lastly, the responded to a citizen report on August sixth, which resulted in the responding police officers assisted by the cane. Using quantities of cocaine, crack, fentanyl, and other drugs with an estimated street value of $28,000. The chief of police issued a press release. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Questions from the board for the town manager?
I would just advise that. I would just encourage, especially if you are in an area where you would have to cross a spot like Sanderson's Bridge where it floods. The the alerts from the town are really like on it. And I wish we'd had them when I was a kid and I lived on the wrong side of the flood because I probably could have saved a lot of like trying this road. Nope, trying that road. Nope. So I, the flooding has been like nice to have the the use of that for it.
Other questions for the town manager from the board? Questions for the town manager from the public? Dan Coolidge.
Give us the increase for 1% money. Do you think that the difference was the eclipse from one year to the next year?
I did not see a difference in the rooms because they only break it down rooms meals and sales. And so the rooms meals is actually the point of the system, I think, and the sales. And they don't know if some of that could be cannabis, some of that could be eclipse visitors.
The eclipse. They believe was a good.
Other questions for the town manager on his report? None heard. Moving on. Rec directions report.
Thank you, Doug. This is my report for August twelfth. Brandon Carnival two thousand twenty-four was a successful endeavor, great weather and sponsorship. Thank you to Rutland Regional Medical Center, Nifty Thrifty, Celebration Rentals, Graph X, Country Village Campground. The Brandon rec Brandon Area Toy Project Event realizes net revenue new after expenses for each organization of $27,028. Sorry, sorry, twenty-seven hundred. Help me. Twenty-seven hundred. Sorry. Want to volunteer with the Wright, Moore, Danforth, and Lad families to help with planning and working the four day event? Please email Bill Moore and or Colleen Wright. Planning for twenty twenty-five has already begun. Special shout out to new volunteer, twenty twenty-four volunteer Addie Boynton. And this is a young man that came to us through a work training program and he volunteered his time every night, was there with me shutting the lights down. And a remarkable young man at seventeen years old is a lot of a lot of great energy and just wanted to shout him out because he didn't have to be there and he was.
No, if I could just interrupt you for a second, there's a comment from Cecil on the Zoom that just reminds us that anybody who's going to speak from the audience needs to be up pretty close to the mic so people can hear.
Thank you, Cecil. Miss Michaela, dance classes are set to resume this fall with Tuesday and Friday classes. Tap ballet, hip hop, and adult classes are on tap with three sessions from October to May. Working with Otter Valley to offer preseason field hockey and soccer camps this week. Field hockey was this evening. Soccer will be tomorrow and the following day. It's a great way for future otters to work with current players. Planning for a bark in the park dog park fundraiser has begun. October thirteenth is the date and the details for this dog parade in Gap Central Park are forthcoming. August seventeenth, Estorbrook will be hosting the second annual For the Love of Dogs Car Show. This is a fundraiser for the Rutland County Humane Society. August eighteenth is the slide of the summer water slide event at Estorbrook. Last gasp of the summer gathering for kids and families. This year will be all in a rec equipment swap. I also wanted to shout out, talk about some of the work I've done, not doing rec. I visited the Vermont Council on World Development's Summer Summit and represented Brandon's interest in presenting on the plenary session board in front of 500 people, talking about the work that we've done around hazard mitigation, emergency management. And just from being there and talking to people, we are miles ahead of a lot of different communities with regard to our our proactive approach to hazard mitigation. The the reason why we had a $400,000 plus warrant this week was because we had another hazard mitigation buyout on Newton Road. There's one more that's in the works for the beginning of September. And we also discovered that there is a program work on doing elevations as well. So if there's anybody out there that's lives in a place that is experienced flooding, is in a special flood hazard. You just have concerns, do reach out because we do have a lot of contacts at the state to to work on some hazard mitigation stuff to try and help keep people safe. And that's my report.
We will have questions for Mr. Moore. The first I'd like to say, though, I believe that their Newton Road buyout, it shows in our warrant, but it was also incoming money from the state so that you all don't think we all bought a big building on Newton Road, which is a state bought a building and the town was a pastor. So now questions from the board for Bill Moore.
I've got a few. In relation to the dog park. You don't have to answer all these right now because I've got a copy for you. How much was the grant that we received? Does the town have anything in writing in the predential board stating that they will pay for one fountain? I was told they don't. They aren't aware of it from a predential board member. What is the agreement?
I'm sorry, do you want answers or are you just going to ask questions and then have me answer? Okay, all right.
What is the amount in donations the town has received for the fountains? Buildings and grounds will dig the trench for the water line. Being down one person in the highway doesn't add to an already full workload. What's the cost of digging, putting in the piping, including the pipe? Who's doing the hookup? To the water line, who's paying for it? Will the town receive water bills? With these additions, what does that do to our insurance costs? This is planned to be installed on land we don't own. Do we have written permission in a long term agreement with the property owner? Curious as to the actual cost to the taxpayers. Looking, you know, there's going to be a yearly cost with this. Because we have to maintain it and we'll have to make sure it's winter arrives and get it going again. So. And we can have answers. So that's the next meeting.
I can provide just for you if I all of your questions, it'd have been a little easier than I could. I do have. How much was the grant that we received? What grant you referring to, Brian?
Did you get a grant for the fountain for the dog park?
No, you receive a grant to establish.
Some of the money that was donated to the town by way of in initial build the dog park at Estorbrook Park for a cost of between fifteen to $20,000. The this was a way forward using creative use of a dog park, giving people giving people a dog park for pennies on the dollar. Because again, we didn't have fifteen to $20,000 to create a dog park at Estorbrook Park. Construction for through town, initially they were going to put a fountain and green park and decided that maybe that wouldn't be a great place for a fountain, but he promised to pay for a fountain at some point. Before we ordered this, I talked to Ray and he said, absolutely, I will pay for this. So I do have from the water superintendent confirmation that he will pay for it, and I believe it's within his spending limit. So whether the predention committee is involved with that or not, I'm not sure. Thank you. So yes, I have assurances from the water superintendent Ray Counter that indeed he will pay for that. And again, this was back from a promise he made to install install a part, a water fountain in a park that decided they weren't going to put it there, but he said he would install one. Moving on, the amount of donations the town received for the fountains, we don't have any direct, we received a $500, $500 donation for the fountain that was taken back. The person received wished to remain anonymous, but felt that the fountain that was going to go in the dog park was too extravagant potentially. But we returned that money. Buildings and grounds will dig the trench for the water line. Being down one person in the highway doesn't add to an already full workload. It does, but this is also part of park maintenance. We're providing two water, two water fountains in a park that desperately needs a water fountain. Currently has a broken locked, was locked. Hydrant, I know there's hydrant, those farm hydrants, you know, the water drops down. So that got driven over by somebody over the wintertime. And that person actually is offering to help us connect to the water line there. What is the cost for digging, putting in the piping, including the piping? I'm not really sure. I don't have those numbers for you yet, but I can find that out for you. Who's doing the hookup to the water line? Who's paying for that? We're going to be working with the fire district to connect since it was one of their employees that ran over our hose thing there. Will the town receive water bills? Absolutely. We receive water bills at every establishment we have. We will receive water bills. Yes. There was a water bill there at one point back when the hydrant worked. With these additions, what does this do to our insurance costs? I have no idea. VLCT usually gives us a big blanket insurance thing every year and they'll know about this. We have to report whenever we have new assets added to our roster. So they'll find out and we'll find out what that insurance cost is. This is planned to be installed on land we don't own. That is incorrect. We do own a portion of the dog park. This fountain will be installed in the portion that we own. So that is not correct. So we don't need permission from the landowner as we do own the land. Curious as the actual cost of the taxpayers. I don't have a full breakdown for you. Once we have it installed, I can break down people's hours if you'd like, and we can realize a real cost for that. What will the yearly cost be? I'm not really sure. How much water is going to be distributed between the two fountains? Because again, there'll be one on the dog park side, one on the Seminary Hill side. So I'm not really sure, but we'll definitely know after a year of having it in place. Appreciate answers. The next meeting, if there's any answers I haven't provided you, I will provide to you at the next meeting.
A question. So when it comes to Brian's question about the cost of the digging, now that we have GovPilot, that's information that we could potentially just have on hand, right? Is that one of the modules that we chose? For this type of thing?
Right. So about the tracking of time.
Yeah. So unlike previously, we can now make sure that it's only X amount, not. Okay, awesome.
Guess my point is, you know, I'm not against this, but everything we add, when it comes time to work on a budget, it just adds more to the budget. So we should be careful with what we keep adding. We had a bit of a difficult time this year getting one to pass and we just need to remember that.
I'm glad you provided clarification to your questions. At the last meeting and this meeting, it may seem like you're opposed to that. You wanted a hose, not a fountain.
I don't think I would have, I wouldn't have chosen necessarily the fountains you got, but.
Yeah, I I just have major concerns about accessibility. And on the one hand, part of me goes, yes, pick it. You know, cheap and easy. On the other hand, I think that if we are doing something, we need to make every effort. It is our responsibility to our community to make every effort to make sure it's accessible. So we live in an old town. There are old buildings that are, you know, this is an example of one that has had to be retrofitted. But moving forward, it would be nice to be inclusive from the get go. And so once I kind of thought about it that way, to me, it seemed like fountain or no fountain, maybe that's a choice. But inaccessible or not widely accessible fountain versus you know, widely accessible fountain is to me, doesn't doesn't feel like a choice. It feels like something that is the responsible, respectful, inclusive thing to do.
Other questions of the rec director from the board? Questions of the rec director from the public?
Yeah. I'm here.
You're there. I saw her hand. I heard your voice. Go right ahead. Please, please go.
I have some concerns at the vagueness of the cost. And my belief is is everything should be researched and priced out before we commit to this. I have a dog. I'm just down from the dog park and I see people go by all day long. However, I'm not sure I should be paying for their dogs to have water when I see them all carrying little water jugs for themselves, for their dogs. I mean, these are very conscientious people and very competent in caring about their dogs. So there's the the failure to not give us the costs. You can't, you just can't start anything without knowing what the costs are, in my opinion. In my opinion. Um. And I'm, you know. Dog parks are nice uh. Uh, for people who don't have land and can fence in their backyard. Which I do have. Um. But I'm not, and there are already benches there. And there are already a lot of wonderful things there. I've been there. Um. But if we're going to spend more money on the dogs. We need to know how much it is and keep it. Within reason if, if we're going to say that we're committing to dogs over. Let's say children. Um, or the elderly. Or whatever other plans we have for this town. We, we need to know. Exactly how much and where. That's my opinion.
So I think. The number Bill had last time. And this fountain is for people, it had like four spigots, right? Per side? No, four spigots total? I don't know. It was not just for dogs. It was a people fountain too.
Yeah, I, I'm pretty sure that people can bring a water bottle. The dogs, not so much, you know, they'd have to carry it in harness, you know, on their back. But I just don't. You know. Uh. I just don't see this is, is a really important. Uh, uh, contribution and need for the town of Brandon. We all love our dogs. I've had five or six at a time. I know. Um. But I just don't think this is. Up there. With the things we, you know, the must-have list. I mean, there are a lot of other things Brandon must have and doesn't have. And we can talk about that another day, but this is not there.
Good, thank you.
So we, uh, you know, we are using dog park, dog park donations. To help fund part of this. They were fun and this was, this was a, this was something that the dog park organizers. This was their next thing off their thing. They got benches donated. This was the next thing that they wanted to be a part of this. Um, there's at this for the love of the dogs. Car show that's occurring this weekend at Estebrook. There's a fifty fifty raffle that's going towards this. Dog park fund, which is again, their next big initiative is to fully fund. The purchase of the fountain and there's this dog. Park in the park. Dog parade that's going to be happening as a fundraiser at Central Park on October thirteenth. They're interested in making that happen and I'm interested in facilitating that.
That's fine, as long as the taxpayers don't pay for it. And so if you need, if you don't, and maybe that's why you don't know what the cost is. You know, and, and having to pay for the water. I mean, we all pay for water in town. I pay for it whether I use it or not. Um. That's all I, you know. It's their money. It's their time. I have no problem with that. I just want to make clear that I don't think right now the taxpayers. Um. Should be funding any part of this. Including your time. That's where I'm at.
Am I right in saying that there's a basketball court and playground and everything also within the same area of the water fountain? So it's going to be multi-use.
So there's going. There's going to be two fountains. There's going to be a fountain that's accessible outside of the park. That will be in between the playset and the basketball court. And then a dog park fountain specific within the fence for people that don't want to enter in where there are dogs. To have an opportunity and that is the one that is being funded by the dog park money. The installation of both are being funded by the taxpayers of Brandon. Through.
Andy Mayo was next.
I, I have some concerns here too. And when we first talked and you asked, you know, that it wanted to be built to where the money was going to come from. I was the donator, so I'll, I'll admit to that. Your story changed. At the next meeting, you said you'd received a seventy-two hundred dollar grant. Is that true?
I never said those words. Absolutely not.
So you did not receive seventy?
I did not receive a seventy-two hundred dollar grant and those words have never been uttered by me, Dr. Mayo.
And you were, so we'll move on from that because.
That's true. I mean, we had to move on from that. Just.
And you also said that. The town owns half the park, therefore that's where the dog fountain will go.
Correct. The, the, we own, we own from the, yes, yes, I did say that we own a portion of the park and that's where the fountain would be installed.
Cover a dog fountain, a disabled fountain and an able fountain. So there are three fountains in one. Did you say that?
There's, no, I said there was four fountains in one. There's uh, there is two different levels, one that's ADA accessible, one that's for children. There's a water bottle filler and then there's a spot for dogs down at the base.
So, oh, good. It's a growing project. And then you have another.
It wasn't a growing project. Uh, Doc, I'm sorry, Dr. Mayo. It's the same. Fountain that I purchased, the same fountain I researched, the same fountains. Absolutely.
It's good if you would, if you would actually give more of your research out to other people at an earlier stage. So they can make a good judgment on things, but moving on, there's going to be another fountain, right?
Yes.
On the kids end.
Correct.
Which end do we own? Do we own both ends? We own all that land on this?
It owns everything where the basketball court and the playground is and the town owns of the portion of the dog park that is adjacent to. The place where the basketball courts and the playground is.
So it owns that much property?
Yes.
I didn't know that.
Actually, before you moved here, Dr. Mayo, the people were under the mistaken impression that we owned the entire park, so much so that. Our own buildings and grounds personnel used to mow the entire isthmus. And people were, uh, people were upset when they realized that when we put the dog park up, we put the fence up that stopped people from going through there. Understand that we didn't own that portion of the park. The upper portion that's closer to us right now.
That's not my concern. My concern is that both fountains are on town-owned property. And not on any property that's possibly going up for sale that you're possibly going to try to buy. That's all I want to be clear on.
Absolutely.
People talk in between these meetings. So those, so now I've answered those two questions. And then I fall back on what Susan said. Why are the taxpayers having to pay for this if you're getting all these grants?
I didn't. I didn't get a grant to purchase the fountains. I didn't get a grant to purchase. That's never been a part of this at all. I don't understand where you're getting that from or where you're mistaken about that. I never said we got a grant to get those fountains. We got.
It's, I, I really think the idea of who said what, when is like a soap. The point is the spirit of what's going on and I just don't think, I just don't think you're, I think you're disingenuous in some of the things you do. Which is why I pulled out. So that.
Mr. Berian. Too, too long.
Uh, Bill, as a frequent user of the Seminary Hill. Park. I want to thank you for all your efforts um, to try and make it a nicer place for the people that use it. It's a very busy place. Um. Shade tree would be nice. But it's a very busy place and these small incremental things that you do to make it better is, is a benefit for the whole community. So thank you for your efforts.
Um, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
And even though I don't like to. Be the kind of. Um, I will not. Sit here and allow somebody impugn my integrity. I'm not disingenuous. I have every email that I've sent. I've had every conversation. If anyone would like to read through my emails, anyone would like to have a conversation about that, I am not disingenuous and I take. Full offense to that, Dr. Mayo.
Next is Cecil on Zoom. Cecil, can you hear?
Yeah, I just needed to unmute myself. Um. I'd like to speak in favor of the fountains. I'd like to, um. Reiterate uh, what has already been said, but I think uh, it can't be said enough. These are not just dog fountains. These are water fountains for people who are using the playgrounds. And for people who are using the dog park that also have a facility to allow for water in the dog park. It's true that many people who bring their dogs to the dog park. Do bring water bottles with them, but it's also true that many people don't. What we've been doing to date is there have been people who have been nicely filling up gallon jugs of water and leaving them. By the fence for those people who forget or don't have it. But it's not always there and sometimes it gets very, very hot and we don't realize that the pets need water. So having fountains for the people with also a facility for the dogs is a great thing. Um, I'd also note that this is something that's been discussed at more than one select board meeting. And the cost of the fountains has been discussed at more than one select board meeting. And the promise from Ray Coulter to help pay for them has been discussed at more than one select board meeting. So this isn't like something that's suddenly being sprung on everyone. And. I also, there are many uh. Projects upcoming that are for the sole purpose of raising funds to help pay for these. Additions to the dog park. A dog park is something that makes a town a welcoming thing and we should be proud of what we've got.
Thank you very much. I feel it is time to move on from the subject.
Can I just ask a quick question?
Yes, you may.
How much of the property is owned by the town? I'm familiar with the par, this is like half, a third, two thirds. I'm curious.
So if, if you were to look, a quick, a quick and easy way to look at it, if you look at it from Google Maps or Google Earth, you would see where the entrance is. About five feet off and uh, five feet. South of the entrance is about where our property line is.
So it's a sliver.
It's not a sliver.
Five feet from the entrance?
Five, five feet from the entrance heading this way. I, I, and again, I can, I can email you and show you the, show you the exact map.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, may I answer uh, Jan's question in case people couldn't hear was, well, could we do just one fountain as opposed to two? Uh, we had considered that, however, it's the, it's the mixing of. Dog people versus just having a strict playground fountain. That was the concern about doing it that way. That's why we went with two fountains because the people that were strictly in the dog park space. That they would have their own fountain versus kids from the playground having to go around. Enter through into the dog park where there are dogs that may or may not be reactive to, I, I may just from, that, that's the reason why we considered that that way.
Hey, I'm going to allow one last question and this is the last question. That would be Vicki.
I just wanted to question, um, putting two fountains so close. Other parks in Brandon that I can think of off the top of my head that don't have fountains. And why wouldn't we want to put a fountain in an entirely different area like um, the park next to. The liquor store or even Kennedy Park or down by the gazebo or something rather than have two. So closely together up there.
So the, uh, I appreciate your question. The. The thought was that Ray was going to gift us one of these fountains. That that would be specific to Seminary Hill. The dog park people had. Some money toward putting a fountain in. They wanted to put a fountain in that park. So it's why we went with those two fountains there. Uh, I don't, I don't disagree with you that we couldn't use more fountains in town.
And how much are these fountains each?
They are three thousand six hundred dollars shipped a piece. And that was worth a twenty percent discount.
And a portion of the dog park does not belong to Brandon?
Correct.
Is it a large?
It's a not insignificant portion. I would say half-ish. And it's not insignificant portion. If the landowner were to deny us access to that park, it would make it a very small dog park.
Um, my understanding is that that. Not insignificant portion is one of the seventy properties that are. Up for potential tax sales in Brandon and questioned the wisdom of proceeding with the fountain at all, knowing that. Well, this owner is very hospitable to the town residents. Um, there's no annoying with the future of that property is.
Okay, we're going to move on. Thank you very much for all the comments. Um. Item six on our agenda is to appoint. Appointment to the Otter Creek Watershed Insect Control District. Pleasure of the board.
I make a motion that we appoint Wayne Rousenberger to serve on the Otter Creek Watershed and Watershed Insect Control District Board.
We have a second. Motion and a second. Any discussion? None heard.
Um, I'll thank Wayne for stepping forward to do this work. Thank you, Wayne.
This will include another person stepping down to become the alternate, correct?
Okay. All in favor of uh, appointing Wayne Rosenberg as the water, as a. Uh, Watershed Control District Appointment, please say aye.
Aye.
You may.
At this point, the board's appointed three representatives, so you're going to want to actually formally make a motion to change one of the other representatives to the alternate.
Who would like to make that?
And I make a motion that we um. Change Olya Hopkins from being um, a regular representative to becoming the alternate.
Second.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to um, have Olya become our alternate. All in favor of that, please say aye.
Aye.
Close, no one? That is done. So our two representatives will be Wayne and Sharon Sterns and the alternate will be Olya Hopkins. Uh, item seven, uh, discuss the FY twenty-six budget writing process timeline and levels of participation. I think I would like to start that as I asked it to be put on the uh, agenda. Um. I was. Mostly open for comments, but I wanted to start with some, some comments of my own. Um, the advisory committee is there to assist the select board in preparation of the budget. Um, they bring another set of eyes and ears to the needs of the town. Uh, by Vermont law, the select board is responsible. For setting the budget and is the voting body as to setting the budget. Uh, to approve it or going to the voters. The advisory committee is in place to assist in that process and attend all meetings. Um, meetings are always won and are open to the public, so anyone from the public can come to any meeting and also have an opportunity to speak. It is my personal vision that the way I would like to see this going forward now is that we would. Uh, take applications for the uh, advisory committee. And interview those and pick our committee. Um, that would be up to the board as to how many and, and who the people are. We have started a process where we interview everyone at all of these positions that we appoint. The positions would be for one calendar year. Um, I would like to hold a pre-budget meeting in advance of us actually sitting down and going over numbers. I feel it would be important to discuss. The process. Of how we're going to work together, the select board, the man, town manager and assistant town manager. And the budget committee to work forward to a uh, presentable budget. Um, and. Also, I'd love to see us actually in either in that meeting or a separate meeting, um. Have a conversation where we really don't talk numbers, but we talk about some of the needs in town. We talk about, you know, let's say if it's a highway department. Where, how do we feel our roads are? What do we feel the needs are? And whatever, have some general discussions without exact dollar numbers set to them, so we can assess. Where we are and where we see ourselves going forward. Um. And then after we all get together and finalize a budget, it'd be a meeting to strategize a rollout process. And putting it in the town report. And having everyone together. I really feel the town is. Uh, doesn't want to go through another negative vote as we did last year. And have um. As, as much inviting as was caused. Um, in the entire process and having to have three elections, et cetera. So that's my vision. Um, I would like to have the board say what they would like to do and then we will open it up to the public. Anyone have anything they would like to say? From the board?
Um, I, I like the points that you've laid out and I think having um. Clear expectations for everybody's roles. Um, from the get-go is really important. is really important so that nobody has any misunderstandings in any direction. Um, so thank you for your thought into that.
Other board input?
Well, I um, I think I'll, I'll emphasize the part that I try to emphasize whenever we talk about this is that um, everybody's always welcome to come to budget meetings. And to um, share their views and concerns and opinions as to how to shape a budget. That's all I have to say.
And where Tim and I have discussed this amongst ourselves in the past, my feeling is that when we have a budget committee, those people are committing to come to all budget meetings where the public can come in, may come in sporadically. They may come to all, they may not come to all. And so I like the idea of having a group of people that are, are willing to commit to, to put in the time and the effort to the thing. So the only minor difference that Tim and I have on that, so. Anybody else on the board wanna say anything?
I would appreciate the input of a budget committee who's there at each meeting because I'm not infallible and I would like to have as many little um, checks as we can along the way to make sure that we take opinions into consideration that I might not be thinking of.
Public comment, whether we should have, should not have and how big or whatever the budget committee feels first. And can you come to a mic or we can?
I have a couple thoughts. Um, first, I think that the budget process needs to take a step back. Instead of working from the current budget and seeing how we wanna correct it and modify it, we need to take a look at what we really need in a budget. Which is different than the amount of monies that each department says that they need. So I think that, look at the budget-making process, but, excuse me, budget building process. Um, should be undertaken at some point and before the actual budget is discussed. Um, Tim is right, anybody can come anytime, sit in, but that makes the budget committee, budget advisory committee largely useless. Other than, I mean, you can have somebody taking notes and reading the minutes back at, to the next group that comes to their, or the group that comes to the next meeting. So having no particular authority or recognition other than being a devoted member of the public does not feel very reassuring or uh, satisfying to me. And lastly, the feeling that I had after the last budget process was that we went through a total of four meetings. Three meetings were mostly um, friendly. And at the last meeting, it felt like the select board came down and said, no, this is what we're gonna do. This is how we're gonna do it. And it actually to me felt like the budget, the select board had, had a meeting prior to that last meeting and they decided what they were gonna pass and what they weren't gonna pass. And then at the last meeting, I was feeling a little bit left out. I was feeling very um, irate every time I saw in the reporter that the budget advisory committee, which consists of six people and the select board voted to do something and the budget advisory committee, it was made clear to the budget advisory committee and, and, and without problem, uh, w- w- without misunderstanding that it was only the select board that voted on a budget. So to me, that was in a great many ways saying the purpose of the budget advisory committee was to take heat from the select board. Who could put together any kind of budget they wanted and then the credit for that would be distributed between the budget advisory committee and the select board when the budget advisory committee actually had no authority in any way. And I'll leave that there.
Mary?
Doug, I like your approach, I do. Um, I think that over the years in the, in the early years when I was on budget committee, it wasn't heavily participated by the public or by the community. It was pretty much the board and the even though it was open meeting, we participated. And even this year, it wasn't participated. So after the voting failed and there were select board meetings, several, a lot of participation from the public. Um, so I do think that the driver, the initial driver to have the committee was to really get that um, non-board perspective on a lot of the issues and, and as well as having, having um, people vested in multiple years on the committee. They gained some sense of the history of decisions and why they were made and where we were headed. So I think there was a lot of value in all of that. I think as even as membership on the committee changed over the years, there was a real disconnect as far as expectations around roles. Um, and I really think that that has to be resolved. I think there's a lot of disharmony in this, this particular year um, on the committee, pretty much because of that. Because there was a disconnect as far as roles or what expectations were for roles. And I'm not advocating that any of them change. I'm just saying there was a disconnect there. So I do feel as though the approach to really lay that out clearly, the advisory committee is a board-appointed committee. So whether you have one or you don't have one is clearly your decision. Um, and then uh, if you decide to have one, what the roles will be is also a board decision. And I think that needs to be clearly laid out and then as you interview candidates or interested parties for the committee, I think a, a key part of that interview process should be with the understanding that these are the expectations, is that something you can embrace? Because even after those expectations are defined, the potential candidates for the committee have to say, yeah, now we understand what you're looking for and I could be that guy or I could be that girl. But if they don't feel that way, then they're probably not an ideal candidate for the committee. And I don't know what those guidelines are or anything else. I'm just saying as a practice to not have that disconnect would be a more successful venture.
Additional public guess?
Or appointing to committees make sure that there's not a lot of conflict of interest with people promoting certain things for certain folks that they're either related to as a nepotism or, or other kinds of direction towards projects and things that are a goal. You know, just make sure that there's not a lot of conflict of interest or it's just gonna benefit certain persons and certain populations. Cause I think that's what turns a lot of people off when they see the same people being appointed to things and other that wanted not being allowed to participate.
Vicki?
Personally, I would like to see some socioeconomic diversity on the committee.
The budget committee since two thousand and fourteen and this past budget was the budget committee meetings was the worst we'd ever had. I was very disappointed in the select board, the way we were treated. We um, it was like you didn't wanna hear what we had to say or people don't always wanna come to the select board and give them their opinion. They come to us and say, would you please speak for me? And so we did that and it was just like listen, it was, it was so frustrating. And then capital, I've been asking for a capital plan for keep saying, oh, we gotta wait till we get GovPilot. Well, I sure hope there's a capital plan this year. Because we have to figure out what those here, if you don't you can't just do a budget for a year at a time. Cause the town will, will start to shrivel up because you don't and I'd like to see more of that, you know, in the, like that early discussion you wanna have, Doug. That would be the perfect place. Where are we going? You know, we do a project here, a project there. Prioritize. What is our priority? Roads, sidewalk? Then, you know, what, dog park, is that a need or a want? You know, that's how you build a budget is wants and needs. You know, you know, you know your basic expenses that you can't do anything about because they're contracted. Okay, then those are pretty, you know, you have the discussion, but then you look at the other stuff, you know.
But I, I did like, um,
Thank you. Anyone else have uh, an opinion? Yes. While Trish is walking down, I just, I wanna take, you keep, keep walking down. Take a minute and I, I agree with everything that you have all said and that's kinda what I tried to encompass in my stating that we, you know, find the, find the people and that can be people of all walks of life and, and that we have a meeting where we discuss the needs and the desires and where things are at this point without dollars and cents even being talked about. Where do we need to put efforts in? And then assess where, you know, the money is and et cetera from there. I, I think those are steps that we're somewhat missing. And yes, I was on the other side last year in the budget committee. I'm on this side and for the last ten years, the same amount of time Jan has been, I've been at one of the two sides. And I, and I think that the, the starting point is really a vital point that we have to start from. So now Trish, give us.
I think it is really important if there is very clear um, clarification on what, what the impact or role that the committee has. I know I'm, obviously went into um, the committee not understanding what you all thought the role was based on the experiences I've had on the budget committees for other towns and, and, and just in general. I feel like the group was really committed to try and come up with the best option for the town and for the taxpayers. But I also felt there wasn't one thing that we brought up that any of you acted on or agreed with. And if you can say that, well, anybody in town can come, I would have come whether I was on the committee or not. I know there's some people in the town that aren't comfortable speaking in front of people, excuse my voice. And so they would come to me or they'd come to other members to express it. So we weren't solely speaking as ourselves. We also So I think it's real important that, that we understand what is the impact we can have. If we're not gonna have any pa- impact at all, then don't make it having a committee is going to have no power whatsoever. I also agree, we need a capital budget. I, Lord, that we don't have one. I mean, how can you plan for the all we need two cruises or all we need a new fire truck or we know, oh, you know, ten roads paved. If you haven't planned that out, you just can't sustain that in this economy. So I very much would like to be a part of it again. I would just like to have a really clear understanding of what really are the and roles.
Thank you. I do believe also that's why I wanted to start this discussion in August. Last year we started in November. Um, to me, I, I personally don't care how many meetings we have to have to get it right. So, a- and to have meetings where we discuss things without even numbers, we have to start it. So I, I think that's important. Anyone else like, dare to say anything regarding the prospects of a budget committee?
I think the point made about not having a plan we don't seem to have a vision. No, ten years and budget and say and it's this and this and this and a fountain there and a park there and a road over there. Let's get on the right road. I agree with that. It's an excellent point. You can't run things if you don't have a vision.
Thank you.
So I'd like to take one more shot.
Yes, you may.
Since this is on the agenda and now's the time to talk about it. Um, I, I, I totally support the need for a long-term plan and I look forward to trying to have that um, be a bigger part of the way the board works. Um, in my six years in the board, um, I've seen varying amounts of forward-lookingness. Um, we could do a better job at that. Um, specifically to your point, um, about the, the authority of the budget committee. Um, I, I, I find it um, it to be the crux of exactly what I have been struggling with, with like, how do we do this in a, in a productive way? I, I've been to more public meetings since I joined the board than the rest of my life, even though I was fairly active, I thought. You know, prior to this, I clearly have been called to be at a lot of public meetings. And I have um, a growing respect for the role that happens when people speak to a, a, a group of decision-makers, which we're elected to be. And um, and it's an opportunity for people to influence the process and change minds, right? I mean, cause that's really a lot of what is the healthy part of politics is truly listening and thinking and changing your view on things. And, and this is why I've stressed how important it is for everybody to be welcome and for everybody to share their view and to try to influence the process. Um, but I think it's hazardous and, and to me, it's the thought experiment that if we do grant authority to a group of volunteers who are on the um, budget committee of any kind, if that budget committee has any authority at all, we've now elevated some people without the electoral process of voting them into, into position. I mean, cause that's really why we have the select board. The select board does have um, I'm speaking now and I'm happy to listen to you when it's your turn. Thank you. And so in that way, you know, the, the thought experiment I have is, you know, for example, with the police department. You know, do we think we should have a bigger police department or a smaller police department? And um, we had some discussion on the board. You may recall at the end of the process, we actually voted to you know, slightly diminish the size of the increase last year for the police department. Um, now there may be other people that think we should have a larger police department. Um, if, if we allow the budget committee to start to weigh in, it's possible that the budget committee could have a group of people that um, disproportionately um, have a certain view. And um, and, and that is hazardous, no matter which side of the issue you're on. Whether you want it one way or want it the other way, you start to have a problem of democracy happening. And, and that's why I've tried to be, again, at the risk of being redundant, welcoming to everybody to come and share their views. But to avoid elevating a budget committee. And, and your last statement, which I think is the most appropriate one, which is that if we're not going to give the budget committee authority, should there be one? And I actually believe that the process would be more healthy if everybody was on even footing and came to the meetings and spoke and asked questions and um, developed positions, um, and then persuaded the decision-makers to agree with them. Um, and, and that we not have a budget committee. That's been the part I've been debating with Doug and with Seth and with different people on my own as we go on.
Didn't feel like we respected our
It's, it's my, it's my, again, my personal belief and they're, they're all different opinions is I, I have been in both sides. And I have never felt that whatever select board was there at the time that I was on the committee side, I never felt they didn't listen to what I said. They may not agree with what I said, but they, they listen. Um, and I felt that even last year, I, I, there were things I totally disagreed with, but you know, I things always have an ebb and flow to them, so to speak. Um, but I feel strongly from either side of the table that I'm on that the the budget decision has to come from the five selectmen that are elected by the town with the input of the Advisory Committee, and that's why the heading of it is Advisory Committee, you know, but they should be respected and they should be listened to. And if they're feeling that they're not, I I guess they need to scream louder at the chair, which this year will be me, to to make sure that you're, you know, I'm I'm having your word heard.
I
Go ahead.
Um, I'd like to just say too that um I I would really appreciate the input of an Advisory Committee in part because there are there are many people who don't mind speaking to the Select Board at a meeting and you know, as Jan said, loves to share their opinions. Um, just teasing. Um, but um, but there are also lots of people that that is is just not an option for them personality wise or for any other reason. And the more people, you know, if if we can basically roughly double our numbers of people who are available to listen to constituents during this process, if they can choose, for example, in past years, well, I don't know Heather that well, but I know Jan. So I'd rather talk to her or I don't have Doug's number, but I can text Ralph, you know? Or, you know, or or anybody on the committee, I would like that. And I guess there is a little risk that we get a lot of people going one direction, but I think that um hopefully the discussion will still be um rich enough that that the dust will settle in a place that's beneficial to as many people as possible.
Don't chase up.
Yes, go ahead.
Sorry, I interrupted, but I feel strongly that every citizen, if you want to call democracy democracy, whether you're an elected official or not, has the right to their opinions and sometimes overrule things that our elected officials may say are nice and good. When a lot of people say, no, that's not. And I think that's where the discord happens is when there's not equal say and there's not equal hearing of of issues that and topics that are concerning people in this town. You know, I'm an elected official, so this is what's going to happen. Well, you can be unelected too, guys. So I think you should really equally listen to folks that have concerns as well as your own goals and needs and wants. Thank you.
Very, very.
Doug, I think having been on the committee five years. I gotta recognize what a lot of my my partners here say, that last year was probably the most difficult as far as a committee member feeling as though their input was being recognized and entertained. Um, just felt that way. I think that you taking the mindset that you are, again, to my earlier point, clearly the board's decision, whether you want to have a committee or you don't, and what the guidelines should be. But if you do and take in the mindset that you have, it sounds as though you're looking to be more collaborative in the discussion. Um, I think that last planning session was not that. Um, it was probably the only one I really recall that was run by Robert's rules. I mean, for me to say something, I had to make a motion. And then I had to say something and then, you know, how many people agree or disagree? The nays have it, move on. I mean, that wasn't collaborative. It wasn't really conversive. Um, it was it was the first time it was run that way. So I think the approach that you're thinking about is will address a lot of the concerns that were there around um input being taken or entertained. Um, and I think just collaborative discussion is is paramount.
I think I saw saying during mail, hand up. And then I will move the question.
Okay, uh, oh, first, I really agree with the idea of having a vision and having a plan. And that's why I got so upset with the dog park too. It it didn't have a plan. It didn't have a vision. Everything is happening on a day to day basis. But secondly, I agree with him. And I agree with you sort of on the contrary in that, as you say about a group that could then have a vote, could then that group could go against that group. It would be raised to that level. At the same time, if you turn it around, the advisory group can say what they want, but this group, which would be the Select Board in its entirety can make the rule. So for the same for for a different reasoning for getting there, I don't think we should have an advisory council. I think we should come to public meeting. And we should all have an opinion, get it out here. I would almost go for consensus, but I I don't think this board could live through it. But I really do agree that the board should be the one that's making the decisions after thorough investigation of what people are saying in the audience. We're the we're the vote, we're the taxpayers, we're the town. But to have what happened last year to Neil at that last meeting was embarrassing. I was so upset. All that work, it was like thrown out the window because the board said, yeah, well, you don't get a vote. That didn't sit well. Thank you.
Board members? Do I see a hand? Oh, yeah. Yes. Yes, sir.
I heard um one of the Select Board saying that only five of you were elected. And I think it's important to remember that elected is not the same thing as anointed.
It's a what?
Anointed, anointed. I think that the Select Board can and does have within its power the ability to spread some limited responsibility beyond its own borders, beyond its own members. It does that with the town manager. It says, we want the town manager to take care of these responsibilities. And the town manager does so with the blessing of the board. It would be possible, if the board wanted to, to give more than just advisory power to a Budget Committee without taking away from its own authority. I think it's possible to make this happen if the board is interested in doing it. And I think it would go a long way actually in reconciling the current attitude in the town that the board is somehow not reaching its full potential.
Would anyone up here want to?
Judy Bundy has her hand up.
Judy Bundy has her hand. Thank you.
Um, Judy Bundy speaking. I really want to say that I'm impressed tonight at how civil this whole thing is, even though there are a lot of hurt feelings in the uh group, you can tell. And there are a lot of concerns on the part of the board that they do better. And I think it's wonderful to see that everybody has come to it. I also think that we all have to kind of remember how this whole system works. We do elect a board. They have the legal responsibility to submit that budget. And if you don't like how they're doing it, you elect somebody different. And it rolls downhill. It takes time to make those changes. Fortunately, there's nothing so horrendous happening that we're going to have a catastrophe between your dissatisfaction, if that is true of most of the town, and making the changes. But I think that this effort to put this in a new light to construct the committee in a way that everybody understands how it's going to work, that we'll talk to people in detail beforehand so that they understand what their responsibilities and their obligations are and their authority and what the limits of their authority is. I think that's important to have that understanding. And if you're not willing to come to something like this on a regular basis, and I applaud the fact that you do. I can't even deal with the numbers. I can't read a balance sheet properly. Um, but I feel like you guys do and you come and you put in a lot of time. You make an effort to improve your town and I applaud that. I just think that you are, all of you in the room now, realize that you're at a point where you need to set a new group of ground rules. Let everybody understand how the work goes forward. Everybody make their best effort to do that. And as I said, I'm so pleased that it's happening in such a civil, respectful way here tonight. Thanks.
Um, thank you, Judy. Um, I would, at the risk of sounding kind of corny, um at when Doug said the comment, he's willing to go to as many meetings as it takes, I kind of had this knee jerk reaction in my mind of going, oh, my God, I cannot do more meetings that had the tone of the meetings last year. Like, I and and I, one thing that I would really like us to have for a goal, regardless of how we do this budget, is that, you know, remembering that we do, we may have different opinions about how to get there, but our goal, corny as this sounds, is that we all want our town to be nice, nice place to live, whatever that means to you. And we are really all working toward that. And I hope that as we work on this, we can remember to keep it um keep it civil enough that that at the end of it, we can all still feel good about each other, even if we haven't agreed with everything.
I am going to make a motion. I don't do very often. I I personally will make a motion to have a five person Advisory Committee and to have our nice town manager um ask for interested parties to apply um by posting that on our webpage. Um, and we will move forward from there. Look to see if anyone would second that.
I'll second that.
Okay, then for the purpose of discussion, it seems like if you're going to um ask for people to be on the committee, you need to to find what being on the committee means. And so um I I guess I would like to see you perhaps for next meeting develop um a description of what it means to be on the on that committee.
Okay. You want to amend my motion with in any respect for that?
And and I think because of that, I that that would certainly affect my um support for whether or not we should have a committee is to understand clearly what you're defining as um the role of each member on that committee. So um I I would suggest we wait a meeting to um to vote on.
Other opinions, discussion?
I'm comfortable taking a vote now and um writing the specifics in advance of the time that people um submit their names for it. Um, as you you've laid it out fairly well, and I feel pretty confident that I'm not going to change my mind about a committee. Maybe maybe I'll be surprised, but um but I feel comfortable with the idea of a committee and I I I'm prepared to to vote tonight.
If if it would please you more, I would be happy to say that from my perspective, that the committee members would agree to attend as many of the budget meetings as is possible, knowing that sometimes conflicts happen. Um, and that um the Budget Committee understands that in the end, it's the if 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 it's to five people on the Select Board that have to approve the budget and make that vote, and it's their job to give us advice and assistance and be our eyes and ears. That's that's the way I see their job description. And then we would try to have a diverse group, but that can only happen if diverse people apply for the position.
On on that point, on that point, I would urge the committee to uh publish in the paper when you're going to start that committee and the qualifications and or responsibilities, your expectations of that committee uh going forward. And then that gives the, you know, you've all consulted on what you what you want. And then people know and they go, oh, I could do that. I can do that. I think that's what you should do.
Seth has had his hand.
Who did?
Seth.
Seth, go for it.
Mr. Chair and members of the board, uh respectfully, I would just like to advise the board as your town manager. So um Vermont is not a home rule state. The Select Board can only take the actions that the statutes allow the Select Board to take. I I believe it's beyond the authority of the Select Board to delegate any um voting to one of its self created committees. Uh, subcommittees. Right. I guess I guess I was hesitating to call it a subcommittee only because it the Budget Advisory Committee wouldn't be made up of members of the Select Board. But um there is a statute, to the best of my knowledge, and I've asked the town clerk a number of years ago about this. I I'm not trying to weigh in on the prudence or not. I I've weighed in over several years being on the Select Board. Um, I don't believe the town has ever voted to have an official advisory budget committee. If it were to make that vote, if the townspeople were to make that vote, there would be there would be actual um standards and the standards are five members elected, not appointed by the Select Board, but elected. And the further standard that comes with establishing such a committee is that if a municipality creates an advisory budget committee, the committee shall evaluate the municipality's budget and make recommendations to the Select Board for the budget based on its findings, which I think is in line with my understanding of the Select Board not being able to vest that committee with its own uh voting authority, but that that would be binding. The committee could vote and make a recommendation based on a majority of its members, but not a binding vote.
Okay, I would like to move the question as as it had been uh as the motion in the second.
Yeah, Charlene, please. Thank you.
To have a five person advisory committee and have our family and do a quick play.
And Mr. Hopkins, you said that that I just got a little mixed up of something that you said. So the way that Doug has phrased it is allowable?
Right, and that would
Be allowable under the Select Board can create whatever committees it wants incidental to it doing its job of oversight of the town.
Okay, thank you.
And what is the difference between someone who's on the committee and someone who's not on the committee?
I don't, I don't see that there's a lot of difference other than the commitment for them to come to the meetings and to uh when we get to the point of looking at spreadsheets that they're looking at the information and prepared for the meeting and to give input, but we listen to input from everyone as we do right here.
Continuity throughout the process?
Yeah. Yeah, to to try to keep the process even. Neil?
I don't know if this would work or not, so I'm just spilling it out there. But would it be possible to have the Budget Advisory Committee be able to vote as the Budget Advisory Committee without setting the budget but making advice? So that it would be a more unified advisory group to the Select Board than having five or six, however many individuals you choose to be on the Budget Advisory Committee? It would be a more directed influence than having separate voices.
We've done that in the past where the Budget Committee got together and made a list of what their recommendations were. That's back when I can get it.
Robin.
Robin. When Robin was in charge, that was the first year we did it. And then we had the five in the budget, but um that's why.
And see how that worked, didn't? And see how that works, didn't it?
It's because that's five that have happened.
Thank you for at least completing Senator, but I, I need to encourage you for the sake of the Zoom people. I, I, I just don't want to make, leave anybody out.
We want to make sure they can hear that too, Jan.
So when the budget committee was formed, we met the first time we went through the whole process, through the whole budget. The select board didn't even come to the meetings, one here, one there, but they didn't come. Because they're the ones that made the decision. So then we came up with a list of all the things we felt we recommended that they make. And they took some of our suggestions, they didn't take all of them, but they did take some of them. Then the next year, we said, why don't we have the meeting together? So it's the select board and the budget committee. Because once you guys start your meetings, then we had to come to those meetings when we'd already went through everything. So that's when it all came back to, we all came to the meeting at the same time. Everybody, you know, spoke their piece, you know? The community has another opportunity, if you have a budget committee, of another five people to reach out to, to give your comments to, because they, they, they don't want to. They don't want to bring attention to themselves or, you know, I, I didn't use to speak out loud either. Went to college and found my voice. Um, so that gives them another place to make comments.
Yeah.
But we can still have meetings and give our recommendations, you know?
I may be naive in my thoughts, but I, my, my thoughts go with that. In the nine years that I've been on either side of the, the thing, there's only been one year that I feel that things were missed as badly as they were maybe missed last year. And that there's a new board, there's new members. Um, and I, I believe that between March and now, we have shown that we listen to the public at every meeting as you come and, and allow you to speak, et cetera. There, um, I, I just don't think we have to put all kinds of rules and, and barriers in place. I, I, I just kind of feel that we can get back to what we had before that worked nine out of 10 years. And, and that we had one year that was a little shaky and that, you know, if it starts to get shaky, I think somebody has to remind me of that. I don't know, that's my, maybe my vision's really wrong, but that's what I think, so. I'd like to move for a vote on the motion. Can you add a red back here?
I'm good, thank you.
All those in favor of the motion to have a five-person advisory committee, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
Opposed.
Brian, did you vote?
I did aye.
He was an aye. Now the record was held for one. Thank you. So those who would like to be on the committee, please watch for a post from Mr. Hopkins.
Does the board, uh, just by general consensus, ask for those, uh, applications to be submitted in time for the next board packet? Or do you want to give a longer stretch? Because we will be into September if it's a longer stretch.
I would like to get started to see how much interest we have and how many people are there and, and, and because we are now interviewing people, we would have to line up.
They'd have to, they'd, they'd really want to be available on the August 26th meeting to meet with the select board. Probably.
Reference.
Yep. So, uh, if I could take your, take your meeting, Mr. Chair. So, uh, for the benefit of those in the room and those on Zoom and for the press, the, uh, I will post tomorrow, the announcement of vacancies on the budget committee. And those interested should submit the cover sheet and letter of interest by noon on Thursday, August 22nd. 10 days. We'll put it in the usual places. We'll have it on front porch forum. We'll put it on the bulletin boards. We'll put it on the website. We'll have Sue put it on Facebook. Yep.
And it was to get five members. Okay. Um, onward thinking, award sidewalk and road paving bids. Pleasure, the board, Mr. Hopkins, give us some control.
Mr. Chair, uh, we had a successful, uh, bid process. The sealed bids were received. We had three bidders for the sidewalks. We had three bidders for the roads. Uh, in both cases, the low amount bid and in both cases, the second lowest amount bid were within the estimates and the available funding. So, um, you have the two columns there and you can choose to award the bid that you believe to be in the best interest of the town. On the sidewalk bid, um, the second bid there, Bruce Meacham, he is the contractor who reconstructed Newton Road for us after the July 2023 flood. The low bid or the low apparent bid, uh, Vermont Roadworks, they are from Brattleboro. The town has not worked with them previously, so I called the town of Woodstock and they gave a very, uh, positive review of their recent projects in Woodstock. So, um, I think the highest bid is probably not something you're going to consider too much there. But either of the other two would be great. And on the road bids, the same thing, the high bid is very high. And then the two, uh, the second bid and the apparent low bid are both under the available funding. And they're both local companies that the town has worked with before, Wilk Paving and Pike Paving. And so, um, the select board could prudently choose either of those.
Okay, I make a motion that we accept both of the low bids for the sidewalk and the road.
I'll second that. Discussion.
And I'd like to go on to suggest that we use any surplus, um, uh, on, um, further sidewalk work. Not in the surplus on the road, the surplus of the sidewalk money we put aside.
Can you give us roughly what the number was we had budgeted for, for both?
Yes, the, the amount that is not required for the bid for the sidewalks is approximately $43,000. Right. So there was $175,000 the board had allocated from ARPA. The low bid, uh, is, we do it with RAP, which is that the select board's intention? Yeah, the low bid is 131,498.
So that would leave us with?
About 43.
Okay.
And we certainly have more sidewalks that could use work and I would be happy to have you.
I did a little scouting and I had thought of one, but you just raised another one that might make more sense. Um, we, so we're going to plan to do long portions of Carver Street and both sides of Pearl Street from Crescent Park to the railroad bridge. The, um, sidewalk that, I mean, the sidewalk that's worst in the town is Union Street. But I, I really hesitate to recommend that we do Union Street because we have this project, you know, to replace Union Street with concrete, not just cover it with some asphalt. Um, so in my looking around cursorily, um, I did go up to Forest Dale. The sidewalks are actually concrete, most of 73 and so forth. Um, but if we're talking about resurfacing, I thought maybe the hill part of Rossiter Street toward Carver Street. But then Tim raised the portion of Carver Street that's outside of where the town had marked for this bid. So I think either of those would be good. I look at.
Can you do a suggestion to just use the extra sidewalk money, not the extra?
Well.
What was the number we had in paving for roads?
We had approximately $317,000, uh, through those sources that I listed out there. And we will require about $244,000, which means there's about 73,000 not required from available funding for paving road.
I don't have an opinion on how to use that. I think I'm just interested in making sure that all the money that we allocated for sidewalks goes towards improving our sidewalks because there's, uh, plenty of need.
I, that's a really good idea.
I, I agree a hundred percent. I also just wonder if,
Sorry, I think he was raising.
If we should put in, hang on, if we should put any of it. We, we can either carry over the paving into next year. So we don't have to ask for paving in the budget. Or we could try to do more sidewalks down in the area that has the most foot traffic up into town. So that's my own opinion now.
I think we should carry, carry the money over, see where we are.
Okay. I'm second that, Ricky.
Um, I just want to say it was 176,000 of ARPA funds that was dedicated to sidewalks. And after Mr. Giles' comment about wanting that money to actually go to sidewalks in the bid, there's an item called the hoop building at the highway department. So I'm just wondering what that is and how that fell into a sidewalk bid.
It fell into the sidewalk bid because it's using the same equipment. It's not using road paving equipment. It's, it, like the fellows, uh, the companies that bid on the sidewalk work have the equipment that can do the hoop building. A, a road paving machine will not do the hoop building.
And the, and the cost of that is in the sidewalk?
Right, because it's sidewalk machines being used. It's sidewalk-like work more than it is road-like work.
Can you explain the work you're talking about? Somehow I'm missing something.
So there's a big, uh, there's a hoop building at Highway, which is, you know, a plastic, um, covering on a metal, uh, semi-circular frame that's sitting on some short concrete block walls.
Right.
That was never paved, the inside of that. And so there is moisture still coming up from the ground. The equipment is starting to show signs that there's moisture being attached to it for long periods of time. I spoke with previous town manager, he was actually under the impression that yes, that had been a plan to pave the building from the get-go and, um, it seems like since we're going to have sidewalk equipment in town that could do it, it seems to me that that would be the right venue to try to get contractors to do it. If this board wants to not do the hoop building from sidewalk money, that is absolutely fine. And in that case, I would recommend that the board consider using some of this. Um, so I have the funding sources for roads listed in the order that I recommend spending. And so, um, you could take from the surplus there off the road bid. And we could do an additional, um, it'll be approximately $8,000. So you could do maybe $51,000 more of sidewalks.
Okay. So it would cost, I'm so sorry, it would cost about 8,000 to pave that building.
Right.
So, right now, that 8,000 is included in the $131,000 bid.
Yes.
From Vermont Roadworks.
Yes.
But that came in lower than we expected. So we wound up with, I, I hesitate to use the word extra because it doesn't, it's not quite right. But like, money that we.
Allocated.
Allocated, yes. So, and it would probably save us money to have like one, when one person, when one company's here.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Just like, okay, so I would, from my own mind, I don't know, I mean.
It, it does not bother me to dedicate the whole $175,000 to actual sidewalks, like that.
No.
That can happen.
I just wonder if it should be on the road bid side of things.
The, the reason it wasn't was because it's different equipment. And so we had different bidders, like you'll notice that, um, you know, except for the top bidder, the other two on the sidewalk and the two on roads, the sidewalk fellows did not bid on roads and the road fellows did not bid on sidewalks. And that's based on what they have for equipment and crews.
Right.
Yes.
Can I just ask clarification? Is the road bid extra that you're talking about, is that part of the money that was voted as appropriations outside of the budget?
No, I'm recommending that the town spend the $32,000 it was awarded for class two paving, which is restricted to North Street and all the North Street bids exceeded $32,000. So we can legitimately use all of that. Then I'm recommending the town spend the whole $85,000 that the voters approved in the article on May 21st, because that can be used for nothing else but paving. Then I'm recommending that the town spend, um, the approximately $100,000 that is a highway carry forward resulting from the work of the town crew on the Arnold District Road rebuild two summers ago. And then only would I recommend that we dip into the $100,000 authorized by the select board from the 1% fund.
Thank you.
So whatever the town, whatever the board decides not to go forward with, would in a sense just not be taken out of the 1% balance.
Great, and that's what your motion was, but, uh, yes, sir.
Want to help?
I have a question regarding how much money or is going to be allocated to see? Or what part of Carver Street are you talking about?
So it was marked, um, it's on the, what side are you on, odds or evens?
On the odd side.
So the evens, it's the even side of Carver Street, um, from where the concrete for Route 7 ended. Down past like where Bernie Carr lives and so forth.
I don't know where he lives.
Even side of Carver Street.
Goes like Methodist church, like maybe five houses.
Okay, because I would submit to you that that section on the side of the street with the Methodist church up to, um, not, not all the way to the Catholic church, but there's a whole section in there that is worse than Union Street.
There's both sides of Carver Street will be done, segments of both sides.
Um, last year I sent a video to a Cecil where I recorded myself trying to cruise over that part of the sidewalk. And I got stuck three times. And then I have other people in town, they ask me sometimes, why are you riding on the edge of the road? And it's not only on Carver, I believe Pearl Street. Um, there's both sides, I think of Pearl, unless I, I may have it wrong. I've lived here my whole life, but I go by landmarks. Uh, if I ride on the edge of the road, it's because the sidewalks are trash.
And both sides of Pearl Street are, are going to be redone.
Just, you know, just want to put that out there.
Point well made, thank you.
Thank you.
So Seth, just to be sure that I'm, I'm understanding it right. The, the low bid for the, uh, sidewalk was 131 and we had 175 set aside. So that would leave 44,000, can we go further down Carver Street than what we were?
That was.
That was what, and that, is that in the motion to continue that sidewalk?
Um, I, I.
Up to the highway, I'd leave that up to the highway chief.
I would like to leave it up to the highway chief.
And he's going to need to work with the contractor.
Okay, uh, can we read back the motion? Will we be moved on?
Well, we just made the motion, can we caution the Brian second of reward for lowest bids for both the sidewalk and the, and the road paving project?
That's all motion, yeah. You don't want to amend it, if they have amended it, put the other $44,000 in it.
You can amend it if you want.
I would like to have an amendment that we put the, make sure that the other $44,000 goes into sidewalk.
Sure.
And then whatever of the 1%.
That, that 1% was for the road and if we don't use that, we don't use.
Right.
I want to, I want to keep the sidewalk. We've, we've neglected the sidewalks way too long. We have a, a motion in a second on the amendment.
My, my only question is, I'm still, I'm still so troubled. And I, I guess I, by the, like, ARPA, the, I just want to make sure that I feel okay about the ARPA sidewalk funding. I feel like perhaps we should just entertain the idea that the 8,000 for the highway department equipment, should that, I understand that it has to go with the sidewalk bid. But that doesn't mean we have to pay it from the sidewalk ARPA funds, right?
It does not mean, and it does not even mean that you have to determine that tonight. Like, I think because the idea was suggested, I would like to have an opportunity to give you a recommendation at the next board meeting about which funds to allocate from. But it's not unreasonable to me, the suggestion that was made, um, be faulted.
Yeah, so, and I know that, I know that it's sort of, just sort of in my own conceptual con- concept of like what's, but to me, I almost feel like I would prefer to, you know, take that 131,000 and sort of say minus 8,000, tack that 8,000 onto the road bid. Because to me that, that's where that cost belongs. And then say, okay, now we're actually looking at 123,000 roughly for the sidewalk. And then still make the same thing, that, the same plan that. And then still make the same thing that, the same plan that whatever we have extra, let's do more sidewalks because. I, I agree that, and I, I was very clear that when I see. People using wheelchairs in the road, like I was not wondering why. I was definitely understanding why. Um, so, and I'm glad that you raised that concern. Um, because that is something that was on my mind. So I would, I would maybe make the suggestion that we sort of. In our allocation of where we pay funds from, that we pay. With road funding sources for the highway thing, the highway hoop house. Exactly, from the one percent money, which would mean that we'd have. Hmm, closer to sixty five thousand. Give or take a thousand. I know that a thousand is still a lot, but I'm not going to do the math on the spot because they'll just mess it up. Um. So then we'd have returning to the one percent funds around sixty five thousand, give or take a little bit. And that would give us even more extra to go a little farther on those sidewalks.
I think fifty one.
Fifty one. Yeah. Thank you, Seth. Um, I didn't dare try it because whenever I do it in a hurry, things go downhill fast. So. Um, because I wholeheartedly agree that. The more accessible our sidewalks are, the better, the more walkable, the more pleasant. I mean. There's a, there's a variety of reasons. So that's, I guess. Would want to add that to the, I don't know, amend it? Uh, I don't know.
Let me a second amendment.
Okay. Sounds good.
Go with the first amendment, which was to make sure that the one seventy five of ARPA. Yeah, the upper. The upper money that was set aside for sidewalking. Uh, all we proposed to sidewalking by adding additional sidewalk footage. That's the amendment. And it was seconded. All in favor of that, please say aye. Okay, so we're, we're there. So now we have, now we have a motion, if I'm technically correct, that. We go with the lower bidder, but we may keep one seventy five to go extra footage. And we go with the low bidder on the road. Correct? So. I will mo- offer another.
Original motion?
Yeah, that, that amendment.
Because you just said the original motion.
Well, I'm see, okay, I'm saying what the original.
Take the lowest bids.
And we are taking the lowest bidder.
Let's do that. Let's just, let's just do that motion because that's clean and we understand what we want.
Okay.
We can, it won't negate what you want to do.
Okay, okay. So now we have that motion. All in favor, please say aye. And so now I will make an additional motion that since we are not using. Uh, the one percent money to look at the. Paving the inside of the hoop to protect our investment and equipment with one percent money.
So I.
Is, is there money left or?
Some of the one percent money to do.
You're going to need some of it, but not all of it.
Right. So the. Yes, so.
Did you want us to authorize you to, to do that at the hoop building?
I think we need a motion.
We may not.
Ten thousand?
We may not need a motion, but I would feel more comfortable if there was something on the books. Um, just because I, I just feel like it's the most straightforward thing to do when ARPA funds said sidewalks, I want to stick with sidewalks.
And we did that.
And we did that, exactly. So I would like to make the motion. That out of the Vermont Roadworks bid for sidewalks, the eight thousand, that is. Um, the cost of paving the hoop house be paid for by one percent funds.
Say that one more time.
So. Can I do it one more time? Okay, so I make a motion that. Out of the Vermont Roadworks sidewalk bid. The eight thousand dollars, that is, um, the cost of paving the hoop house because. Well, I won't repeat that because I'll just mess poor Charlene. I'm having mercy on you, Charlene. Um. She's like, not enough. So out of that bid. That we pay the eight thousand dollar hoop house paving cost. From one percent money instead of ARPA money.
A second thing. If my quick pencil math is correct, um, and I'm not, I didn't bring it down to the small numbers, but. You're going to need to use twenty seven thousand of the one percent money on the road bid.
Plus eight now.
And then now plus eight thousand to do the hoop bid. So it's still. So that's thirty five thousand and it's the savings still of.
Sixty.
Sixty five thousand.
And it gets us eight thousand dollars more worth of sidewalks.
It gets us protected in our, in the hoop building.
Yep.
And a motion in a second on that. Everyone understand the motion?
Yes.
All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Sorry, Charlene. I did my best. Even though it probably didn't sound like it.
For those that are might be keeping score out in the audience, that is not spending. Where we had planned on spending a hundred thousand of one percent money, it's, uh. Only spending roughly thirty five thousand of it, which saves us sixty five thousand for something else, which we are still trying to save for Union Street. Because that's a big job coming up. So that's where we're at. All right. Sidewalk and paving bids are done. Well, we, we have to get our, our bunny and match in line when we talk about that. We have to have our projects in line. We are. Working on the project of Union Street. It has to be dug up and there's a need of. How much?
Three hundred fifty thousand.
Three hundred fifty thousand that we have to be savings to get to that project, which is another. Year away, which is sidewalks and paving and water and shore.
Sidewalks. And curbs.
And curbs.
And that's a project that's a year away when we say we don't do any long distance planning. We do do some. Thank you. Uh, we are now at updating the blanket payroll authorization.
Mr. Chair, at the top of the page, I have listed the three changes, um, requested here, which are to. Uh, remove Sean Erickson, the former highway, um, foreman due to his retirement. Remove Jeff Beasusi, the former zoning administrator due to the end of his term. And to correct the wage for Winston Forbes per the agreement made at the time of hire. That he would receive the same four percent increase at the start of FY twenty five as the other staff.
Motion from board, please.
I make a motion that we accept this blanket payroll authorization.
I second that motion.
Motion in a second. Any additional discussion? None heard. All in favor of approving of the payroll authorization, say aye. Oppose, no one. Public comment. Well, Kiki's hand went up first and it's going to be, pardon? You are second, Sam.
So someone said earlier about this being a small town and people talking in between meetings. So there is a. Dog park that the town is potentially going to be buying the rest of the dog park property. For some, I think is rumored to be twenty five thousand. And it seems like that'll be in addition to the seventy two hundred dollars for the fountains for taxpayers to. To bid on. So that would be a thirty two thousand dollar expense for the town.
You've heard that rumor? I have not heard that rumor as board chair. I don't know if they would like to respond over there.
That is news to me. I have not heard a single thing.
I've heard that rumor. Um, and I can confirm that the owner of the high school has reached out. And has made an offer to the town, the po- the possibility of purchasing that piece of property. Twenty five thousand dollars. For, for the entirety of the part that there, that they own. So that would be the, it's missed from. I mean, the. Yeah, like that triangle where everyone turns around, it goes up, down to the, the edge of the dog park.
And let me, let me, I want to, I would like to ask Mr. Hopkins, our town manager, to explain to the public the process that would have to go through. If the town even wanted to buy it because it's a lengthy process.
Sir Chair, the executive session that I requested, uh, was in fact regarding this. So. Perhaps the board doesn't need it. Um, the. The facts that have been related are substantially, as I understand them. And I think the board should take it under advisement at this point. And there's, there's clearly no, um. Well.
Can you define what the processes are?
Well, the process has, um, I think that, I think that for a number of years, the town was working under a misconception. Of what is required. Um, we did talk with the town's paralegal, um, just in passing, um. She was in town regarding a different transaction and she reached out to her attorney. Uh, at her firm and they don't believe that there is in fact a public vote required to acquire real estate. Now that was a longstanding. Um, that was a longstanding rubric under which the board was operating. They couldn't find it in statute. They'd not heard of it. I did a review of where I thought it should be. And it does not appear to be there. So I think we might have, uh, and this all comes back down to the time when the town bought the. Um, parking lot behind what is now Dunkin' Donuts, right? We did that through a town vote. And it appears that we did that through a town vote, probably to, uh, have the taxpayers authorize the funding of it. Not because it was actually statutorily required to have the taxpayers assent to purchase real estate. That's the current, that's the current professional advice.
Microphone because we. And then I want to get to Sam.
I'll, I'll hurry. The question was, if the town is going to purchase that property, is it to keep it as a dog park? Or is it an alternate project slated for that property?
So the, huh, so the, the landowner requested a meeting and made this offer. And I thought it prudent to bring the select board to tell them that this offer was out there, not to have a solid plan as to whether or not we should. Consider doing this. Um, you know, but the possibility exists that. Again, this is, I don't even know if it's something they would want to do, but the possibility exists that we could create, uh. Parking on either side of the, on the either side of the park, like, uh, parallel parking on either side of the park. Um. And I mean, that was, that was it. Like the, the, the fact that we'd still have this dog park possibility. But I mean, like, again, like this was so. In the formative stages of even the select board hadn't even been apprised of this. This was not, oh yeah, absolutely. That's something we're going to do. No problem. Like this was like, oh, this is a possibility. This is something that the select board would like to even consider pursuing. If so, what will we do with the land? Do we want to acquire the entirety of the park? Do we want to create an opportunity for parking? Uh, going forward. Uh, I mean, this is not, yeah.
And if the select board, um, upon hearing this possibility. Gave the consensus view that they were not interested in it, it would just end right there.
So you heard it before we heard it.
The gentleman.
Uh, I went, no, I told Sam that he could speak. I promised Sam was number two.
I have to tell you, I haven't been to a meeting in years. This is absolutely torture to have to make a public comment and sit through all this. Why don't you put the pub- public comment first?
It's a long story, Sam.
This is, this is punishing.
It's a long story, Sam.
Couldn't get to a meeting, do any business, but. All taken, Sam.
Okay. So I want to tell you, I had a surprise in my mailbox yesterday. I received a notice and I think Bernie dropped this in from the Northeast Mountain Air Airstream Club. You two guys know about this, right?
Yes.
Okay. I didn't know about it.
Well, that, that's, that's why the notice.
Northeast Mountain Airstream Club, Deer Park Street residents, we have been working with the Chamber of Commerce, Downtown Business Alliance. The Town of Brandon to host the first New England Airstream Rally, September twenty seventh to twenty ninth. We will be parking twenty to thirty. Airstreams along Park Stream for the weekend. I went to their website. They're calling it the Downtown Takeover Rally, Brandon, Vermont. Come join the Northeast Mountain Air Club for the first annual downtown takeover in Vermont. So I hope that doesn't mean. Not us, okay? The town manager, the recreation director, the economic development.
Thank you, the director of Brandon's Chamber of Commerce are all very excited to host us on Park Street.
On Park Street. Well, I could tell you something. I'm not excited about it. And I'd like to know where the public discussion of this was.
I, I don't recall the meeting date, but we discussed it at the select board while we were meeting in this room. So it was. You know, since we came down from upstairs in May, April.
So I'm going to be dramatic about this. So you guys decided that I'm going to have a trailer. With strangers parked seventy feet from my bedroom window for two days. I think it's ludicrous to turn Park Street into a campsite. And when have we ever had a public event on a residential street? Is there an answer to that? For two days, no less.
So, well, I always call it the Brandon training. Like out there, why couldn't they have parked their stuff out there?
So, first I find it insulting that I learned about it. This isn't the way things should happen. You got all this nonsense going on for two and a half hours. And here's something that's going to take a residential street and turn it into a public venue. Have we ever done this before? I doubt it. Not in the seventeen years I've been here. It's horrible to proceed this way to try to shove it down somebody's throat. You know, it's inconsiderate and I want to ask whoever, the board. And the two managers that this be moved to a public location, it would be totally appropriate in Esteban Park. Why should residents of Park? Two and a half days.
Um, so I, I'll speak. So when this became an opportunity, uh.
Wait, what opportunity is? What's the opportunity?
So the opportunity to have, uh, a bunch of people come to town and spend a lot of money at our downtown businesses. That was, that was, that was, that was sold to us. And we thought that this was a, a cool idea to get people here in town and it's spending time and energy.
You're sacrificing the resident, the, the residents. Comfort so that the town could have more business. Put it downtown. Who are you to make this decision that you're putting this in front of my bedroom?
I. I appreciate, I appreciate your, uh.
My anger?
Your anger, your, uh, being upset.
Was upfront. And I got news for you. We have a friend, I think, that may attend this. And once we went and visited her at one of these rallies. Other than maybe a meal or two, these guys are spending nothing. They're going to be socializing whether they start at breakfast and go from trailer to trailer, or they start at dinner and go from trailer to trailer. I don't know if there's a, a quiet time limit on this. Does anybody know if, they said there's no hookups in this when they announced it to their club? Can any of you say that there's no generators?
Uh, I cannot say that. And again.
So you're going to tell me that I may be listening to a generator?
I can't say that you are. I, I, I don't know. This is.
How can you have approved it?
We.
Here, if you can't tell, I'm livid over this.
I, I can tell.
And I'm even more livid after listening to two and a half hours of nonsense.
So we, I, we, the chamber asked us if this was something that we would be amenable to. And we said this seemed like something very cool to bring to Brandon. Brandon.
That was your opinion?
Yes.
Where did you ask for other opinions?
I, I didn't ask for other opinions.
Isn't that arrogant?
We did bring it to the select board.
So you mean every day you have to, every meeting you have to come and sit through this nonsense to find out if you guys are gonna play king and anarchist, anarchist? I, I strongly ask that this be moved off of Park Street.
I don't recall that coming to the select board and if it did, it doesn't. Explain very explicitly. And I think it's. Just another tourist trap. Which is where.
Well, I, I, I'd like to um, come in on both sides to this. So sadly, I, I don't remember um, this coming before the board and I might be mistaken. And so um. So um, I would appreciate it if, if that's the case. Um, on the other hand, I um, appreciate that as our economic development officer. It's appropriate that you're looking for ways to increase the um, activities in our town. Um. If I had known, I would not have been supportive of parking um, motorhomes or. Trailers on Park Street because I similarly would be very um, upset if there was a trailer parked in front of my house for two days.
With strangers.
And.
Sit, and they want permission to set up on.
And the generators, I'm really even more um, sensitive to because that bugs me everywhere I go and listen to generators. And so I, I, I. I want to respect and admire your um, ambition to have economic development happen, but um. I would not have supported this.
So you know, Bill, as I listened to a lot of the discussion about how much money you're spending on the damn fountain and everything else. Can you quantify what, how much money is coming into the town over this event? Have you spoken with the organizers about what they're gonna spend? I bet you you can't give us a dollar figure on what they're gonna spend, but you're gonna tell me that for two and a half days, I have to put up with this. I really demand that this be undone and moved somewhere appropriate. And I also. I guess. Need to know. That. No public event should be put on a residential street without public discussion.
I've.
And maybe I'd be less angry if I didn't have to sit here for two and a half hours.
I.
Yeah, I would.
Yeah.
Figure it out.
Oh. Uh, I, I'll, I'll reach out to the chamber and, and uh. I'll reach out to the chamber.
The chamber?
Uh, the chamber was working with the downtown Brandon Alliance. Um, and they. Uh, the folks from the Airstream reached out and asked if Brandon would be interested in hosting.
I don't remember this coming to the board. I do remember when they had the chamber and the movers shakers meeting. It was mentioned. But I don't think it ever came. You don't remember?
I.
I remember just from that point, but I don't know. Uh, hang on, I want to finish. I, I'm not sure that we. Lost it, but I don't.
I would like to ask a commitment from the board. That this be moved off of Park Street. It should be put in a public venue, not in a residential area. That's all. I would like a commitment from the board to undo this.
We will talk about.
I think your manager. Overstepped his uh, authority.
If you would, you would.
It's relevant to the airstream. Is this the same airstream event that was always traditionally held at the Country Village Campground?
I don't know. I'm not sure. This, this, Melissa Corbin from the Airstream folks reached out and talked about it downtown. They go, I referred it to the chamber, thought this would be a cool idea for Brandon.
Because if it is, it's simultaneously taking business away from a local. Business.
Alright. Um. What would the board like to do?
I don't want to see it there. Sounds good for now. I, I don't think it ever came to the door.
I think. I think we need to find out what commitments have been made and what options are available to us. Um, it seems that Bill fully understands our preference to try to find an alternate. Location. Um, and so that's as far as I feel like I can promise as a board.
That is absolutely clear to me. I will reach out. Soon as this meeting is over to. The chamber who's been spearheading this effort. I, it's been made clear to me. That. Perhaps the board doesn't like this. Certainly Sam doesn't like this and that Park Street residents might find this to be offensive. It's nothing that I thought would be offensive. I apologize to anybody who. Thought that I was being cavalier. I thought this was an opportunity for Brandon to have. Some more people come to Brandon. Clearly, I did not think of all the perspectives in saying Bernie, I think that this is a cool idea and that we should go ahead with this. I'll reach out to Bernie who's been the primary contact. From the chamber to. Make. To make this move.
Thank you.
Okay, other public comments, uh, Ms. Mayo.
You know, the thing that's bothering me now, being a born Vermonter and being in and out of Brandon all my life, is that it's turning into Disneyland. Disneyland, Vermont, and we're residents and we have a right to our privacy and. I mean, not to know that is really ignorant. People that live here, there's a certain amount of pleasure and happiness. I, I now have, I now have the beer. The, the beer business across the street from, from the park, across the falls. I can't, I don't know what their name is. You know, the. What is it called? That business where everybody goes and, pardon? Yes. They had, they had a, a party over there. The other night, I think it was, it was probably Saturday and they put in black plastic. Vents is around that area and all these people are over there. Now I see those people over there. From my courtyard and I see them during the day and I see them sitting and reading and I see them with children and, and having a picnic there. I don't see them over there in Groves drinking and screaming and playing loud music. So I'm sort of getting concerned that Brandon's turning into this party town. Disneyland. And we, you know, it's one thing to want to make money, Bill, but at some point. What businesses are they really going to? You know, look at the empty buildings on Main Street. Why don't we focus on filling those buildings before all this stuff goes on? It's getting, it's getting out of control. I'm really sorry and I agree with Sam. I, I'm just. It, we're residents. We're residents. Thank you.
If it doesn't change, I think everybody. That's opposed to this should park their vehicles out front and not allow access. They might as well do something.
Okay. We have to remember that three people respect and decorum here. Um. Any other comment?
Doug, I'm sorry, I'd like to make a comment.
Yes.
Um. Two different times. Uh, this, this evening. I've been accused by Dr. Mayo of being. Disingenuous. And ignorant. Um. I'm, I'm neither, I'm neither. I'm neither. Oh, you absolutely did call me ignorant and. You're starting out with. I'm a Vermonter. I'm a Vermonter too, Sandy. My family's from Rochester. I went to high school here. I went to college here and I chose to make Brandon my home and I love this place and to intimate that I. Value money. Over. My neighbors, over the betterment of this town is insulting and incorrect.
Thank you, Bill.
I think that the organizers, you know, will. Work on this problem. And. See what we can do. Public comment on anything other than this issue? None heard? Motion to adjourn?
I think Jan's coming up.
Oh, Dan, I'm sorry.
So we've warned a meeting for the budget committee for August twenty second. Are we? Are you gonna cancel that meeting or are we gonna still have it?
So you know who's on the budget committee? It doesn't seem to make sense to have a budget committee.
It's a former budget committee, but you, if you want to.
No, I'm asking you. I'm asking you guys, is that meeting still gonna be on the books? That's what I'm looking for.
We weren't invited to that meeting.
Oh, as far as I would understand it, the budget committee has not been appointed with uh, terms that end. And so if the budget and the budget committee asked me to warn a meeting, I warned the meeting. It's a public meeting that anyone can attend. It's posted. Um. I, I don't believe the board is gonna act before that date. In any way that would change the composition of the budget committee. A few days after. That, that's the only way it's gonna go on because. It would not be known at that date.
I, I would assume that those of you that, that have been on the budget committee and probably most of you are going to apply to me on it. I don't know. And if it helps you prepare to move forward with your application, that's a good idea. I mean. That didn't, that didn't come from the select board initially, so I, you know, I.
So we know that it's a legal thing and has to be warned and that's why, you know, we know that's happening.
I would rather hear what you have to say. Um. Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Seconds.
Everyone's second. All in favor of returning? Stay. Oh.
Oh, great.
We still gonna have executive session?
Damn.
Yeah, I think we should. Move to go into executive session.
Um, sure. Do we need a motion for that? Yeah.
Motion of adjournment?
Yeah. Stable emotions returned.
Um, okay, now I need to read.
Yeah, Billy.
Which, which is the number, Seth? Cause this is an amendment, right? Hit it one more time. Okay, so I make a motion that we enter executive session. Under the os, under the auspices of one VSA three thirteen A two.
I'll second that.
Motion in a second to go into executive session. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Both, no one. We're in executive session. We are out of executive session with no action taken. We are now looking for a motion to adjourn.
No further, motion to adjourn.
Second, all in favor? Aye, aye. Good night.
Good night.